13, 2022, regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council. It's called to our 6:10. I'm going to ask our treasurer to do the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna ask our...
We have a pastor in the house. I saw Pastor Greg.
Well, who was here first? Which pastor was here first? Pastor Greg, come on up and do the invocation for us today, please.
Thank you.
I go first? Okay, if you would, bear your hats with me. Father God, thank you so much for this day. You're an awesome God, and we're glad and happy to be created. We're glad to be living in the city that we're in, and we're thankful for, you know, you pressing us into life. So, we're grateful. I want to pray for the city council today. I pray for the kind of the bigger issues that are going back and forth in the city. There's passion on both sides. There's insight on both sides. And I pray, Father, that as they work these things together in this city government, that really, really good things would continue to come out of this. We bless everyone here and their insights and their heart. And we pray that good, good, good things come from the city itself and in their interactions with each other in this council. We ask these things because you are a really marvelous Father. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, I hope you guys are all doing well. We have some items on the agenda. Let's move ahead. President's Council presentation. Councilmember Montero, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So, it's that time of the year that usually we present the check to the Hawthorne Police Department on behalf of the Hawthorne President's Council for the K-9 unit. You know, we did the community dinner in May of 2022. I want to thank all the people that show up to eat the spaghetti dinner. And I'm going to read all the, some of the donors, because this is the collaborative effort of the community coming together to support our police department. Okay, the South Bay Whip, Kenny Jew, South Bay Ford, Chevron, Dr. Helen Morgan, the Comfort Inn, Alex Montero, Connected Credit Federation Union, John Raby, Guy Harker, Imperial Project, Women's Club of Hawthorne, Ramona Gardens, Mohammed Al-Wadala, Carol Steinhauer, Norm and Royce Morton, Pat Donaldson, Donna and Maria McIntyre, Sentinel Bible Church, Larry Robbins, David Keaton, Oliver Valentine, Mary Flat, and Dennis Wild. So, all these people donate money, and I have a total of $14,000 that I'm going to present to the Captain Tamatani, because our chief has some other prior commitment, and the K-9 unit. But before I do that, I'm going to call these two gentlemen to the podium, Mr. Bob Marcela and Norm Morton. These two gentlemen's been working with Hawthorne President's Council as a volunteer for more than 40 years. And you know Bob have cooked those chickens for 40 years before he retired. And Norm has been the treasurer for almost 40 years. And we know that before they declared their retirement, so I want to recognize them in public, because the Hawthorne President's Council is not just Montero. It's a group of nonprofits and churches coming together to benefit the people of Hawthorne. So, I'm going to give Bob a certificate that is a plaque of his 40 years in service. And every year now, the Hawthorne President's Council will give a scholarship to the losing culinary art on behalf of Ms. Bob Marcela. And you know Bob Marcela is this outstanding citizen of this community for many, many years. He's part of the Italian club. So, I'm going to be down there with you in a minute, Bob. Okay, so, your work has been outstanding. All those chickens that you cook, I think it was like hundreds of thousands of chicken, pieces of chicken. So, I'm very honored to be part of you, at least for 25 years, after quarter travel, right? So, I'm giving you this plaque, and I'm going to give you another plaque on behalf of the Hawthorne President's Council for your dedication of our service. And then Norm Morton. And this plaque actually reads "Present to Norm and Royce Morton", because Royce is Norm's wife of thing in more than 50 years. And she always act as a secretary underground, right? Because Norm was a treasurer, but she always send the letters out to ask for donation. So, this also presented to say thank you, loyal servant dedication to the Hawthorne community. Your contribution are much appreciated, the Hawthorne President's Council. Okay, so I'm going to go down there. And if you guys want to join me to take pictures, you're welcome. Can you clarify the fact that those chickens have not been cooking for 40 years? Thank you. They're not, they're not, no, it's a little bit over 40 years, but it's okay. We actually had to go to pasta because we couldn't find any more chickens. Look, we have to say welcome to the K-9 unit over here. Look, see, we have a beautiful K-9 dog right here. But he wants to play. All right, come on. It's a check for $14,000, okay? So, make sure you come back in October and eat chicken again.
Why is my car not talking to me?
Oh, don't forget your plaque behind the podium. Hey, Yaya, can you give them the plaque for me, please? Oh, yes, for the chief, for the Tamatani. So, again, thank you very much. And like I said, you know, the community comes together, and then you see the result and the benefit that goes to our K-9 unit. So, thank you very much, and Mr. Mayor, take over.
Excellent. All right, so what we do have, okay, so let's move on to the oral communications. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, oral remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation. Okay, Ryan Richard, please come up to address the city council. Super brief, just lead them on.
So, Mr. Richard, as president of the Holly Park Homeowners Association, please introduce the family of the award recipient. We have a scholarship award for her and the winner of the past scholarship award.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, council, everyone, for being here today. Ms. Ryan Richard, I'm the president of the Holly Park Neighborhood Association. And today, we're here to honor our recent scholarship honoree. Every year for the past 10 years or so, Holly Park Neighborhood Association has been giving out a scholarship to support our outgoing seniors from the city of Hawthorne to help support them on their journey through higher education. So, today, we have two honorees. We actually have our past honoree, who is currently on her way to graduating from Grand Canyon University. She's looking into getting to doing her master's program. She's graduating with a 3.95 GPAs right now. And we have the, unfortunately, our recipient is already at school. So, we do have her mother here, Tamara Lofton, here on behalf of her to receive the scholarship that we're presenting out today. So, if we'd like to have Ms. Michaela McNeil come up and Ms. Barbara Lofton, is she here as well?
Yeah.
Ms. Michaela?
Ladies, so you'll have three minutes to address the city council as part of oral communication. How you doing?
Hi, I'm good. How are you guys doing? So, my name is Michaela McNeil, and I'm a senior graduating in December, attending Grand Canyon University, as you just said. And my major is psychology, and my minor is behavioral health science. And so, after, I'm thinking about going straight for my masters, which would be in the fall. So, I'm thinking of like either marriage and family therapy or family and human development, just working with children with disabilities, like in lower-funded communities. And I just also just wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity and for the honor to be here receiving the scholarship three and a half years ago.
Congratulations.
Good afternoon. My name is Tamara Lofton, and I'm the parent of Brooklyn Lofton. Unfortunately, she could not attend this evening because she is already at college. She is attending Cal State San Marcos University in San Diego, California. Her major is forensics chemistry. And I would be honored to accept this scholarship award on behalf of my daughter, Brooklyn. And thank you so very much to the Holly Park Neighborhood Association.
Thank you. You want to take a picture? Okay, we're going to make one single exception right now for a picture. This is usually not part of the oral communications process, but...
Yes, we have a certificate of recognition for Brooklyn Lofton, your daughter. And so, we're proud to recognize her. We congratulate her for graduating from Da Vinci Charter School and for being admitted to attend college at California State University at San Marcos.
Thank you.
So, I invite my colleagues to come down and take a picture with...
Quick picture?
With whoever you want to bring up.
And if I can ask the following people to line up in preparation for their comments, Jasmine Leon Guerrero, Elena Maloney, and Marilyn Sanabria, in that order, please, line up, please. Jasmine Leon Guerrero, representative from Senator Steve Bradford's office. Go ahead, miss, welcome.
Can you hear me? Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Pro Tem, and members of the city council. My name is Jasmine Leon Guerrero. I'm district representative for State Senator Stephen Bradford of the 35th Senate District. I just wanted to come to tell the community of Hawthorne that we have an event this Saturday by the senator. It's the Men's Empowerment Summit, and this will be held at Cal State Dominguez Hills. The event is actually the sixth annual Men's Empowerment Summit, and this is in partnership with KJLH Radio. And it will be on September 17th, on Saturday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And it'll start off with a prostate awareness walk and run throughout the campus, followed by some panel discussions throughout the day. And the keynote speaker is actually George Gregg Mathis. And the panelists will speak on topics like dating in the digital age, the metaverse, gaming, esports, the business of music, building generational wealth, entrepreneurship, men's health and prostate panel awareness, the Reparations California Task Force, and employment. And they will also have free health screenings available. So, if anyone is interested, I encourage them to pre-register at kjlhradio.com and click on the Events tab, and that is where the event link is located. Thank you so much again, have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. And please send our regards to the senator. Okay, Elena Maloney?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Vargas, city council members, city staff. I'm here tonight to reconnect for just a few minutes after a long spell from COVID. My name is Elena Maloney, and I served as the executive director of the New Star Family Justice Center. We are a domestic violence and social services organization here in the city of Hawthorne. We do serve the entire South Bay, but we have been here in the city of Hawthorne for many, many years. I would like to congratulate the city again on the 100 years celebration. I was part also of the, what do you call the...
The parade.
The parade, that's right. I was in the parade. That was a very fun thing. Also, I learned about all the progress that the city has made. Congratulations to all of you. We also, as an agency, made a lot of progress, too. We multiplied our services. We now have a lot more services that we offer, also in Spanish as well, which we didn't have before. We now have an MOU with the Hawthorne Police Department. We actually brought a grant together, which I hope, if you can, good luck here, that they will accept that, which means that we can serve more clients here in the city of Hawthorne. We also have a grant with the Hawthorne School District, where two of our staff members spends quite a bit of time over there working with the students about teaching a little bit more about healthy relationships and being a support to the teachers. So, we're very happy to do this work, and we're very happy to contribute as part of the success here for the city of Hawthorne. I would like to give a special thanks to council member Valentine, whom I called a little while ago to ask if we could use October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And it's a time where we do campaigns, and we'd like to do a campaign again. So, we are able to use now the front of the city hall here on October 7. I also want to thank the city manager for setting this up for us. Just want to also introduce Marilyn Sanabria. She is the program director of the Family Justice Center program. And she'll talk just a few more minutes about our services. Thank you.
Marilyn Sanabria.
Good evening, mayor and council members, staff and community members. My name is Marilyn Sanabria. I am the project director for the New Star Family Justice Center.
Three more minutes, go ahead.
I thought the time went by fast. So, a little bit about ourselves. We are not domestic violence agency, but we also are one-stop shop, meaning that our goal is for any person that is experiencing domestic violence or any elderly abuse are able to go to our doors and have every need met. We work alongside with other community partners to get this goal done. As I was mentioning, October is Domestic Violence Awareness, and we will be having a rally out here. We're calling it the Power of Hope, a domestic violence awareness campaign. It'll be from 2:30 to 4:30 p.m. There will be a chance for people to speak, domestic violence survivors to speak, as well as children to provide messages of hope. As well, we will be doing a prize giveaway for those that come in and participate. The goal is to make, the goal of this event is to make sure that everyone knows that there is help out there to kind of take away the stigma of domestic violence. We did see an increase during COVID, and so, we want to make sure that people are aware that we are here to service you. We are here to provide the community a safe place. For those that are, need help, we do have a phone number where we could reach, which is 424-336-9470. That number, once again, would be 424-336-9470. It is our hope that we continue to provide services to the great city of Hawthorne. Thank you so much for your time. We will be giving you also flyers if any of you would like to attend and give us your support. Once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Joseph Gummer? I'm sorry, the spelling is a little bit unclear. If you could let us know what your last name is, sir. Thank you. Your last name is, sir?
Yes, hello. My name is Joseph Gumlick, G-E-U-M-L-E-K.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for giving me this chance to speak. I'm a resident from the Ramona Track in Hawthorne. And although I know that the council cannot do any detailed responses, I am here tonight to address the council to consider updating and/or repealing going through the appropriate processes of the bicycle registration section of the Hawthorne Municipal Code. This would be 10.76. It currently states that it is unlawful for anyone to operate a bicycle upon any public property in the city without first obtaining a license. These are physical items that need to be affixed to the bicycle. And per the California regulations this is under, this is limited to a fee of at most $4 per year or $2 for a renewal. I have doubts on whether maintaining such a licensing program is actually feasible for the city and worth the effort. And so, that is why I'm asking the council to consider just dropping this requirement. I did contact city hall about getting my bicycle registered in mid-August. And although I got a response that it was forwarded around, I did not actually receive any response on how I can go about acquiring such a license for my bicycle. I am personally doing my part to keep my family as a one-car household here in Hawthorne and to reduce the competition for the limited street parking within the Ramona Track. And so, in updating this section of the municipal code, I'm encouraging the city council to take steps to support residents who choose smaller, human-sized ways of transporting themselves for their local trips. I'd have more to say on how the roads around here can be made safer and which areas currently have some, in my opinion, glaring flaws. But going into the details of that would be tricky within the three minutes provided. So, for this, I'm just asking about the bicycle registration stuff to be dropped. And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for looking out, okay? City attorney, could you take note of that? And let's take a look at that. Okay? Thank you, sir. Patricia Donaldson?
Good evening, mayor and city council and mayor pro tem. Patricia Donaldson, president, CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. Two things I want to say per the chamber is we gave out 100 backpacks, thanks to Alex Montero and a lot of other people that, the Kiwanis Club, they really helped out tremendously. We gave out 100 backpacks with a ton of supplies in them at Corin Bloom Elementary School a week and a half ago. Also, we're having our golf tournament on September 26th. And well, if anyone would get a hole in one, they would win a 2022 Mustang from South Bay Ford. There's all kinds of things that are going to take place. It starts at 11:00 with the breakfast. Lunch is 12:00 noon, and a buffet dinner is at 5:30. Okay, and then I received a package in the mail a few weeks ago. And it was really, I was shocked at some of the things that I saw in there. And to think that there is someone... in there. And to think that there is someone that's running for city council that has domestic violence in their background two years ago, has altered checks and put their name and their partner's name on it, and there's just so much more. I can't understand why this person is running. And then the last thing I want to say, and this is me personally, this has nothing to do with the chamber. And the other thing is, one of the people that's running, their brother is a drug dealer. And from what I understand, and I don't know if this is true, but you know, hearsay, is that he wants to open up a dispensary in Hawthorne if this person wins for city council. So I think those are things that need to be looked at. I think those are major things that need to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know about that. Okay, John L. Jefferson?
Mayor and City Council Members, I'm John L. Jefferson. I'm the Senior Pastor of Del Air Baptist Church and the Chief Executive Officer of the Del Air Community Development Corporation. And I'm here to share with the council and the city that we have been providing services for families here in Hawthorne and the South Bay. We currently have a program called Thriving Dads. And this last month, we graduated 60 fathers from our parenting and domestic violence and anger management courses. These fathers did not have an opportunity to have visitation and reunifications with their children because they entered through our program and the services that we provided. Those fathers now have connections with their families, and all but two fathers were given unification services and now have custody of their children. We also have a program called Nurturing Mothers. This program helps mothers that have their children placed in the Department of Children and Family Services, and they're needing services such as case management, anger management, parenting, and domestic violence. We provide those services for those parents through a 12-week parenting program, a 20-week anger management program, and a 26- and 52-week domestic violence program. We have been truly, truly successful in reuniting families. Families that came to us and say, hey, the social worker is not returning our calls. We're not getting visits with our children. We work with those families and work with the Department of Children and Family Services so that these families can receive those services. And the majority of our families that we serve are here, right here, in the city of Hawthorne. And we provide these services. We have opened up our doors of our church. We have renovated three rooms on our church property to have visitation centers. So we have a visitation center from Monday through Saturdays from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. because we know as a community that visitation with the families are very, very important. And we advocate for those families every day, all day long. And we're in court, we're on the phone, and we're in what they call a child and family team meeting. We are present with those families, and we walk alongside them. The other thing that we do is we provide support of tangible gifts. Just today, we passed out two checks for mothers that needed their rent paid because they had lost their jobs and they were not able to work. We have paid their rent. Currently, I'm on my way here today. We're providing a father, a non-offending father, who has a newborn baby. We provided him with car seats, cribs, diapers, wipes, everything that he needs to support his child. All you have to do is contact the church at 310-676-8352. We vet every need. We supply all of the needs. We have two philanthropists that are willing to support our work. Thank you so much, and have a blessed evening.
Amy Shepherd?
Hello. Good evening. My name's Amy Shepherd, and I'm a candidate for Hawthorne City Council. I just want to thank Pastor Jefferson for all of the programs that he offers to the city, because I think it's amazing work that he's doing there. I wanted to say thank you to everybody who reached out after my car accident. I've been out of commission a little bit. It was a hit-and-run four-car collision on El Segundo and Jefferson. So a big thanks to HPD for coming out. I was a little dazed. And for US Tow, they were kind of amazing in working together with HPD to waive the tow fee that I got charged for being a victim of a car accident. So I appreciate everybody that reached out. I wanted to address the package. I keep looking at Ms. Donaldson, because I, too, got one of these packages in the mail. And I just want to say, as a candidate for Hawthorne City Council, that there's a packet that we get from the city clerk in the beginning, where we agree that we're going to run a clean campaign and have a code of conduct amongst the candidates. The information that I found in the packet was a little confusing and overwhelming, and seemed to want to imply certain things about people that I just didn't find verifiable. I do understand that one of the other candidates is also a Realtor, and he did have some problems with his licensing. So that is a concern for me, and that is something that's verifiable that we could all see. But I'll let him speak to that on his own during the debates when you guys ask questions. I want it to be known that I don't condone that kind of behavior as a candidate. I think we should all stick to our issues. There's a lot going on in Hawthorne with the homelessness. Coyotes seem to be a very popular thing right now. And there's just a lot of issues that we can be addressing as candidates and really putting our best foot forward. So no bad words to the person who sent it out. Maybe it's their first time running, but I would just, like everyone that's running, to know that I don't want those kinds of things being out there about me, so I'm not going to do that to you. And I, you know, I feel bad. Dr. Sanford is here, some of the information about her, and it just seemed really unfair to her to get caught up in that, because it didn't seem like it was something that was truthful about her. So that's it. I'm going to be having a meet-the-candidate event on September 28. There will be some information on my website, which is votforamy.com. And my name is Amy Shepherd, A-M-I-E. votforamy.com. So thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak to the city council? I believe the lady with the young baby was here to speak to the council. If you guys could go bring her in, please. Just, she had to take care of the baby outside. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay. Name's Gordon Michael Migo. On Tuesday, August 9, Torrance City Council gave LA County Public Health Director Barbara Ferrer a vote of no confidence because of coronavirus decisions elected officials said were overly cautious and anti-business. Councilman Aurelio Matucci introduced a motion saying Ferrer, an appointed leader, has excessive power over the county, doesn't take conditions of individual cities into account. Barbara Ferrer kept on overstepping her authority. Matucci blamed the extended COVID shutdown during the pandemic for being the main reason for the city being in dire financial straits. Pandemic stay-at-home orders in 2020 certainly contributed to Torrance's money problems. South Bay's largest city is heavily dependent on sales tax, particularly from Delano Fashion Center. Matucci's motion passed by a vote of five to one, with Councilman Mike Griffiths voting no. Matucci said the vote was important because Ferrer continues to lead the county's Public Health Department. We need to send a message to her that we don't like what she's doing. Barbara Ferrer is not a medical doctor. She has a PhD in social studies. Thus, she really lacks credibility. Barbara Ferrer has allowed the use of remdesivir as the initial treatment for COVID that was promoted, pushed by Dr. Tony Fauci, who has flip-flopped all over the place, as a COVID drug that is known as causing organ failures. The World Health Organization opposed its use years ago, especially in Central Africa, where over half the people in various villages died of the drug's use, more so than the disease itself. And she also opposed the doctors and hospitals' use of hydroxychloroquine, ivermectin, budesonide, a whole host of other drugs that are very effective and very safe. COVID-19 statistics, LA County, this is as of August 31, 33,124 deaths listed. But note this. CDC Director Rochelle Walensky, in testimony before the United States Senate, testified that only 25% of the deaths listed as being from COVID were actually from COVID, and that the other 75% of the deaths were from various other causes. And as we know, all medical institutions, when patients come in, they're tested. And so the other 75% tested after the fact and didn't die, they died from other causes. Barbara Ferrer should resign or be fired from her job.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next speaker. The lady who wanted to speak, is she here? Yes or no? Let's get, let's bring her in, just so she gets an opportunity. Go ahead, Ms. We need to do this now. We can't wait. Anybody else wishing to speak? Sir, go ahead. Next speaker. A single, yeah, it's only one time. Yeah, that was the, we counted that.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Estela Rosco. Vine porque yo hice un complaint con...
What's that?
Yo vine porque hice un complaint porque mi casa, la dueña estaba rentando tu cuarto y yo le hablé para que viniera a quitar el otro cuarto. Pero el Alex Martín no hizo nada porque ya más de un año y no hace nada. Nomás fue y me quitó mis cosas que tenía en el patio, que ahí no tenía que tener nada. Me hizo que sacara las motos, que sacara todo, que ahí no va, que no eres Torres ahí. Y yo le hablo y no me contesta. Y por eso yo vine para ver qué hacen porque luego me subió la renta y la casa no está nada de arreglada. Tiene hoyo, se me están metiendo las ratas. Y tiene hoyo en el techo, se gotea. ¿Donde está la lámpara? Y ya él ya miró, ya tomó fotos él. Y yo no veo que hace nada ya más de un año.
Okay. All right. So Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Manager, she's making a complaint against one of our code enforcement officers, Alex Martinez. She called essentially to make a complaint that the landlord has illegal addition within the house. She split the rooms. She called one of our code enforcement officers by name. She mentioned him. And then instead of taking the information down, she actually started citing her for offenses. So if we could just take a look at that, follow-up. Okay. Si puede pasar aquí al lado, ellos van a tomar sus datos para que se comuniquen con usted.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Sara. Ahorita estamos viviendo ahí en la 4605 West Imperial. Y ahora compró otro nuevo dueño de la señora que estaba. Entonces el señor ha llegado muy exigente y no arregla. Y ya hay muchas ratas. Entonces, no quiere que nosotros tengamos dos carros. La troca quiere que la tengamos afuera, teniendo parqueo. El señor es muy grosero. Y no quiere darnos dos carros. Entonces tenemos que pagar basura, agua, luz, gas, y no tenemos botes de basura.
Okay.
Y los quiere contrato para poner el agua y no los quiere dar contrato. Y no está bien eso.
El nuevo dueño?
Sí. Ha llegado muy, muy grosero.
Okay. Pasa aquí al lado. So another, that's a tenant, renter, landlord dispute. So, but at the same time, there's some code violations, it sounds like there. Okay, gracias. Okay. So is there anybody else wishing to speak? If not, okay, go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead.
Lili Fernandez, here Hawthorne resident. I wasn't going to speak today. There's been a lot of positive going on, but I know that there's candidates that are running. Some there were four, some were not, some whatever, you know, everybody has their own background. But to come up here and speak against other candidates and ill speaking on them, knowing you have a tail of a background yourself, bringing in other past mayors that stole everything from Hawthorne, shame on you, Ms. Pat. That's wrong to do that. I wish everybody luck, and whoever wins up here, I just hope that you do the best for us. Anybody up here, just do your background before you vote. Look at every candidate, and let's do our own background. Not that you especially receive something in the mail, because I don't want this to turn out what happened with Mr. Awad ran for mayor. That was a very ill, everybody was grossed out here of Hawthorne, and I don't want the same thing to happen here. We know that there's other family members that are related to the old mayor. They're related. It's known, but nobody comes up here and talks about it. But now I did, so. And I know you represent them, but I just think we all need to get along. We all need to do things the right way and do things for Hawthorne. It is supposed to be the city of good neighbors. Thank you, everyone.
Any, anyone else wishing to speak before the city council?
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to ask Tom Tom if he wants to say anything after, you know, the captain, because you know, usually when they receive the check, they say something. But I failed, too. I failed the knowledge for him.
Absolutely. Oh, then he could use this as oral communication, yes.
Before you move on, please.
Under oral communication. You get three minutes.
Captain, I'm sorry. I forgot to give you the mic.
That's no problem, sir. I think I preferred it that way. So on behalf of Chief Michael Ishi, and obviously, the Hawthorne Police Department's K-9 program, and the hard men and, or hard-working men and women of the Hawthorne Police Department, both sworn and professional staff, we cannot express a sufficient amount of gratitude to the President's Council for their traditional and longstanding unwavering support of our K-9 program. It really helps keep us afloat and keeps our officers with the ability to attend the most up-to-date training with the most up-to-date equipment, and obviously, the most important part of the equation, very, very effective, four-legged, furry, fun-loving partners. So in that respect, our gratitude to the President's Council and for everything that they do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. All right. There's no further comments from the public. I declare oral communications closed order. Okay, so I want to remind the public, during oral communications, a bill was signed into law by the state government, allowing for us to remove people, whether they're being disruptive, even slanderous. So realize that you speaking up here during a city council meeting, during oral communication, doesn't shield you from being sued by a private party for being slanderous and making untrue comments. You're still held liable for that. Good. And then also, freedom of speech, coming up and speaking before the city council, especially during campaigns, isn't as a candidate, or somebody else advocating for a candidate, or playing the political games. That's bad form, okay? That's just plain bad form. All I got to say, a couple people spoke, at least one of them. You throw, you throw a rock at somebody, but yet you hide the hand that you threw it with. I think that quote says a lot, okay? Why bring something up here at a city council meeting if you didn't have anything to do with it? Okay? So let's just be careful with that. I think the community has seen that. The election I had with Mr. Hader Awad was very ugly. And it seems like people are just using tricks out of the old playbook. So let's, let's just try to be a little bit more mature and talk about stuff during your campaign, your literature and elsewhere. This is really not the form, but you're free to do it. Just, unfortunately, it won't work with the public. So other than that, Mr. Clerk, you can send calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have four items on the consent calendar. They're Items 2, 3, 5, through five, for your consideration and approval. Item 2, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinance on tonight's agenda. Item 3, City Treasurer's request approval of the warrants for August 23, 2022. Item 4, City Treasurer's request of warrants for September 13, 2022. Item 5, Resolution Number 8377, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming September 15, 2022 through October 15, 2022 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Hawthorne, California, for adoption.
Motion?
Take it.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Good comment. Go ahead.
Yes, real quick. Thank you so much, first of all, for Resolution 8377. I'd like to... I'd like to, for future, maybe next year, include indigenous community.
Okay, we could probably have an actual standalone period for that, too. That would be nice, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that thought, I mentioned that. Bids, opening results, we have bid openings, Mr. Clerk, item six.
Item six, now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for tree trimming project, city project number two-two dash zero seven. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication Filed. There were three bids received, all were accompanied by bidder's bonds. The prices are as follows. West Coast Arborists, five hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Mariposa Tree Management Inc., three hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. North Star Land Care, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and five dollars.
Okay, that was it, right? Okay, so this calls for, we'll, we'll accept the bids and refer them for study and recommendation, I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Next, we have a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, please proceed on item seven.
Item seven, now is the time and place for a public hearing on the draft substantial amendments to the twenty dash twenty-four consolidated plan. Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three, action plans for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnerships Home Programs. Housing Department Declaration of Publication Filed, no written communications were received. Recommended motion, the staff advises that the City Council, one, conduct the public hearing and receive comments on the draft substantial amendments to the consolidated plan and three annual action plans for the use of CDBG and home funds. Adopt the twenty through twenty-twenty-four, sorry, twenty through twenty-four consolidated plan as well as the twenty through twenty-one and twenty through twenty-two and twenty through twenty-three action plans and authorize the city manager or designee to submit the plan and any necessary amendments to the plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Three, authorize the city manager or designee to negotiate, execute, and amend contracts with sub recipients or professional service providers as necessary to implement the CDBG and home projects identified.
Are there any, anybody wishing to speak on this item? If not, I'll declare the oral communications on this item close ordered. I make a motion, okay.
Second.
I can make a motion to approve the draft substantial amendments to the twenty-twenty-four consolidated plan, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two to twenty-three, action plans for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships. I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
I just, I really can't top Angie when she was the city clerk, she used to speed through these and not miss a word, right? Remember?
I was younger.
But you did pretty, you, you really did.
If you guys want me to go faster, I can definitely go faster.
No, no, that's, that's not what we meant. I was just, I was just remembering what she did.
Well, okay.
I thought that was a challenge.
I like to hear you.
Item eight.
Item eight, now is the time and place for a public hearing on the draft of twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Programs. Housing Department's Declaration of Publication Filed, no written communications were received. Recommended motion, the staff recommends that the City Council, one, conduct the public hearing and receive comments on the draft twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. Approve the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two caper for the CDBG and home partnerships programs. Three, authorize the city manager or the designee to submit the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two caper to the Department of HUD.
That was it, okay, anybody wishing to speak on this item? If, if not, I'll declare oral communications on this item close ordered. I make a motion to approve the draft twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two consolidated annual performance and evaluation report caper for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnerships Home Programs.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Next, we have ordinances, Mr. Clerk, item nine, ordinance number two-two-three-four, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending sections two-point-three-two, point-zero-one-zero, positions not included, and two-point-three-two, point-zero-two-zero, positions included of chapter two-point-three-two, classified service of Title II Administration Civil Service and Personnel for Introduction.
I move to introduce. Next, we have the city manager's consent calendar, Mr. Clerk, please read item ten into the record. And then Dr. Joe Nakagawa will give a presentation on item ten. And we will be voting separately on this item after the presentation, okay?
Item ten, the City of Hawthorne will be receiving the first installment of settlement funds to be used for opioid addiction prevention and abatement. The city has two existing programs that qualify for the funds, which, which the programs will greatly benefit from the additional monies. The existing qualifying programs are the Hawthorne Police Department's Narcon Program and Los Angeles County Alcohol and Drug Abuse, a nonprofit agency that provides rehabilitation services and education for, among other issues, drug addiction.
Okay, will we, should we do the presentation first? Dr. Joe Nakagawa, where are you at? Oh, there you are, how you doing? Go ahead, sir.
Evening, sir.
Good evening.
So thanks for allowing me to speak on a very important topic. As you all know, we have a very serious opioid problem in this country. It's ravaged our communities and caused untold numbers of deaths from overdose and lives ruined. I'm not going to dwell too much on the legal aspects of it, but the big pharmaceutical companies who manufacture and distribute these drugs have been found partially culpable for their massive overuse. In restitution, they have agreed over the course of about twenty years to pay over twenty-six billion dollars to the individual states and the cities in order to right some of these wrongs. As a municipal city, the City of Hawthorne is entitled to a portion of these funds based on the size of the city. In order to qualify for these funds, a city needs to have several programs in place. One of them is a diversion and rehab program for which we contract with La Cada, which is the Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse and also for abatement and harm prevention. Fortunately, the Hawthorne Police Department has a very robust Narcan program where we can administer a life-saving medication called Narcan, the generic name is naloxone, to help reverse these overdoses. I have a very short presentation, most of which is videos, so you can see how effective this medication is and how powerful it can be.
Okay.
So I'm gonna start with a video, this is from our body worn cameras. All of our officers now wear body worn cameras that record everything we do and actually capture some of the great work that our officers are doing every day. And these videos speak much louder than any words that I could come up with.
Mr. Mayor, hey. Hey, man. Here, is this, is this your dad or your brother? Your brother, move up, we get him out, okay? What did he take? What did he take? Hey. Hey, hey, buddy.
Junior, Junior. Junior.
Junior. Junior. Junior.
Junior.
Junior, now wake up. Wake up, Junior. Junior, okay, stay right there, I gotta get my head back, stay right there. Make sure you breathe and talk to him, talk to him. Talk to him. Mary, Mary, my extremely shallow breath, I don't like it.
No, no, no.
Junior. Here's I. Straight. Hey, keep talking.
Junior, please, please, Junior. Please, Junior, I can't use you, baby. I can't use you, Junior. Junior, I can't use you, Junior. Junior, I can't use you, Junior, I can't. Oh, no. You're coming to come on.
Yeah. Junior, Junior. Junior, breathe. Breathe, breathe, there you go. There you go, breathe, 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 breathe. Hey.
I got two shots of Narcan, he's slowly moaning now, but I guess I'll respond at first.
Yeah, Jason, sit up there, sit up, it's okay. It's okay. Come on, dude. You all right, man? You sit down real quick, you gotta do, you gotta get checked out, bro. Where you end up taking? So you sit down?
So as you can see, this opioid epidemic affects not only the people who overdose, but their families and their loved ones and every life we save makes a huge impact in our community. So the Hawthorne Police Department does carry Narcan in all of our patrol units and we give it quite a lot. Even just today, we gave a dose on an overdose and saved another life. Just as a demonstration of how severe this epidemic is, this chart actually shows the rate of overdoses over the past, say, ten, twenty years. The graph only goes up to two thousand and sixteen and I guarantee you, that line has not flattened out. It continues to rise and skyrocket and we're seeing huge, huge numbers of overdoses. And much of it is due to this medication here, it's called fentanyl. It does have legitimate uses in the hospital, I use it in the hospital, it's a great medication, but only if it's given by a doctor and supervised. Unfortunately, it's out there, it's cheap and it's cut into the other narcotics that people use out there, such as heroin or morphine, but it's completely unregulated and it's much, much stronger than the morphine or heroin and it's extremely easy to overdose on. So just as a graphic, it's over a hundred times more powerful than morphine, which everybody thinks is very, very strong. And there's other stuff out there that's even stronger, there's one called carfentanil, which is ten thousand times stronger than morphine. So just a little sniff of that can actually cause someone to stop breathing. So this medication, which we carry, it's called naloxone or Narcan, actually is very, very effective because it blocks the receptors that these drugs bind to and these drugs kill by stopping the people's breathing. So people pass out, they stop breathing and when you don't breathe, your brain doesn't get oxygen and the brain is extremely sensitive to the lack of oxygen and within minutes you start to lose brain cells and it will cause permanent brain damage or death. So time is of the essence. So even a minute, two minutes in response times can save brain tissue and make the difference between life and death or ending up in a nursing home with brain damage for the rest of your life. This is what it looks like, it's very easy to give, we actually leave it behind at a lot of scenes, so. It's, this one is intranasal, it comes in IV form, but our guys carry this form, which is like those nasal, next nasal sprays that people use for allergies, extremely effective, extremely easy to use. And we give it to people who are in high-risk situations as well as carry it in our cars. So the reason that it's so important for police officers to carry this is because we're generally there much, much faster than the fire department. Their contracted response times are about ten minutes. Ours, on average, average three to four minutes to time on scene. So during those five or six minutes, we can make a huge difference in the outcomes and save a lot of lives. Our response is very fast and nonjudgmental. We don't ask questions, we don't do any investigations. If we think that there's someone who's overdosing, we give the medication and figure the rest out later. We don't want people not to call for help because they're afraid of getting in trouble for using drugs. We just give it and then, you know, that will be their learning lesson, we don't need to do anything else for them. As part of our outreach program, our SROs at our schools participate in diversion. If they identify students who are at risk, they guide them through diversion programs. We also do leave behind naloxone, so sometimes we'll visit high-risk areas, certain facilities where people use a lot of drugs or homeless encampments and leave it behind for them to use. We also work with La Cada for rehab services. One of the reasons that we leave the, leave behind Narcan is because the fire department's pretty fast, they're there within about ten minutes, but we're a little bit faster, we get there in half the time. But the friends and the family who are there are the fastest, so we like to leave the Narcan with them as well so they can initiate the care even before we're there, hopefully to save lives. So I'd like to end with one more video, this is one of our paramedics, actually. He can do even more on scene than even our police officers and it demonstrates how effective this medication is.
Hello, please. All right, can somebody first take a draw?
Someone's here, someone's here.
Hey. Is he using drugs or anything like that?
Yeah, he's used drugs before, but I, I mean, there's no, I don't know where they.
What kind of drugs has he used?
He uses, I don't know, he uses that one.
Okay, do me a favor, put him on his side. I don't. When was the last time you saw him, Will?
I saw him, but like, I, yeah, a minute ago, a minute ago, I don't know, I fell back asleep.
Yeah, he's. Not like we want him to, but who? All right. Yeah, there we go. All right, don't put him on his side again, hold him there. We're gonna go on a breathe form a little bit, all right? His breathing's starting to come back a little bit, there we go. No, you're fine, you're fine, lay down, you're fine.
Rest it, rest it, lay down, lay down, sir, lay down. Lay down.
Yeah, just lay down. What's up, sir?
What's going on, sir?
Uh, I just wanted to completely, yeah, full-time, uh, vaginal restoration, so I first got here. Two doses of Narcan have been administered, second dose, uh, we got some effect, but started breathing, putting a nasal airway in on him, started rescue breathing for him, started.
Sounds great, you guys had a four milligram?
Yeah, two, so we gave him eight milligrams. Okay.
So you can see, it took quite a bit of time for the fire department to arrive, so every minute matters for these people. For sure, he would have had some brain damage if our officer wasn't there to give him the Narcan a little bit sooner. So the money that's coming from the settlement will fund both the front end of it with the diversion and also the harm reduction with our police officers and Narcan program, as well as the back end with rehab services to hopefully reduce the impact of these terrible drugs on our community.
Thank you, I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote for this. How are you wish to vote?
To the chair.
Well, roll call vote, please, first.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Yes, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to say, Dr. Nakagawa, that's impressive because I have seen some of the video before that the chief showed me, but I'm telling you, thanks God that we have you at that department as a doctor, right? Because you've been training some of our police officers to administer some of this narcod and some other, you know, CPR, we saw that kid that drowned in the pool over here and it was safe, thanks to you guys intervening so quickly. So God bless you all over there and tremendous job and I think, you know, every dime is well spent, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, it's not me, though, it's the young officers out there doing all the hard work.
You trained them, so thank you.
To the chair.
Councilman first, then you. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Nakagawa. That was an excellent presentation and very instructive. I wanted to ask you, you spoke about the statistics for the United States. What do the statistics look like for Hawthorne? Are we seeing a rapid rise in Hawthorne overdoses as well? I assume. I assume so.
Overall, across the country, there are sharp spikes in the use. Some areas of the country are affected more so than others. In the southeast, for some reason, it's much worse than it is here, but here in Hawthorne, we actually have seen a large increase over the past six months to a year. Just in the past, maybe, one month, we've seen more overdoses than we have in the previous six months. A lot of times this is due to a bad batch of fentanyl that's out there, and people overdose because it's more concentrated than they expect. So it's not always the same rate all the time, it comes in waves, but definitely over time, we have seen a marked increase.
And I wanted to ask you, you're, you educate the police officers that you work with, do you have an education program for the public?
We do. We often integrate the Narcan program into our community CPR and first aid programs as, as part of the education we do for our community.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reyes?
Yes, thank you so much for, obviously, educating a lot of us here with regards to how quickly this, this Narcan works, and when it's used, administered, and yes, there is an uptick with regards to drug use. My concern is the potential suggested policy legislation coming from Sacramento and the city of San Francisco, which is basically looking for cities to implement a safe place for those to actually ingest drugs, and then be monitored, right? So, I know this is totally different, but I just want to assure that we don't go there, and that the city has restraints when it comes to those decision-making, because it is municipalities that are making those decisions. And so if you could please just possibly follow up on that, that policy, that legislation that's coming through the pipelines, and see how the city could ultimately put it, agendize it, and be against it, so that we could know in our community that we wanna use things such as this to empower the community, but more importantly, to fight the war on drugs, and not feel as though the suggestions of those that think that they're helping by implementing these types of stations where folks are actually injecting drugs, and then having volunteers to care for them while they're high, and then ultimately coming down. So if you could do that for us, I'd appreciate it, and work along with the city manager on getting something agendized to, again, aggressively be against that suggestion in policy for the city of Hawthorne.
Of course, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate you mentioning that, but okay, so everybody's asking about what about Hawthorne, the drug, patterns in Hawthorne, you know, you have such a great, big problem. All right, look, we have a problem just like we others, others, a lot of other places. Those ritzy areas like Palos Verdes and Torrance and Hermosa Beach and all those, they just have the designer drugs that are just as potent and powerful, they just couldn't afford it, look, the, more expensive drugs, but they're still using drugs. You know, and our poor people here, just because, you know, they use some of these opioids and other, other stuff, you know, we don't wanna encourage that, but, you know, there's drug use throughout the region, including those ritzy areas. I went to a private school, and those kids were getting high off of fancy drugs all over the place. So I think we need to keep that in mind, and I absolutely support what Councilwoman Reyes did, said, but I don't know if you guys know it, but it's that same jerk, State Senator, Scott Weiner. That same jerk. You can go tell him, I don't care, he can come here and I could tell him in his face. The same jerk that's trying to take away our local control by taking away our local control and allowing for any developers to come and do whatever the hell they want, is that same jerk that's trying to come up with these, uh, safe heaven, haven, ingest, drug ingestion facilities, okay? So this guy moves in from out of state, lives here like two or three years, run for state senate, and thinks he can tell us what to do, all these idiotic types of solutions, you know? So, shame on him. And then luckily, we have our illustrious governor, who's running, was thinking about running for mayor, uh, for, for president, all of a sudden, his liberal tendencies are turning very conservative because he wants to appeal to all the good people within the inner land, and so he's opposing Scott Weiner on this one. So it's not gonna go anywhere, uh, Councilmember Reyes English, while our governor's thinking about running for president, but either, it's not gonna go anywhere. A lot of things aren't gonna happen while he's running, wanting to run for president, so just work, it's kinda weird, right? So, just some factoids there, okay? But either way, I think we should still make a declaration on our own, so I, I'll, I'll support that, of course.
That goes with helium, oxygen, right? Kids in the balloons, getting high, yeah, so that too.
All right, thank you, guys. I just, I get upset when I hear stuff like that, so I'm sorry. So, uh, we voted on that, so now let's move on to the city manager's consent calendar. Mr. Clerk?
All right, items, item eleven, Dominguez Channel Watershed Management Group Annual Payment. Item twelve, Rental and Facility Use Policy Update. Item thirteen, Progress Payment Number Two in the amount of five hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents due to the Sequel Contractors, Inc. of Santa Fe Springs, California for Local Street Improvements Project 2022, Project Number Twenty-two dash zero four. Item fourteen, Approval of an Additional Funding Request for J. Lee Engineering, Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the current fiscal year. Item fifteen, Progress Payment Number Two in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, a hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-four cents due to Martinez Landscape Company, Inc. of Silmar, California for Holly Glen Park and Jim Thorpe Park Improvement Project, Project Number Twenty-two dash zero three. Item sixteen, Agreement Between the City of Hawthorne and the Department of Transportation for Maintenance Services on the State Right of the Way Within Local Jurisdictional Limits. Item seventeen, Agreement.
Excuse me, I'd like to pull sixteen for discussion.
Oh, yeah, let him complete, well, I'll, I'll give you that.
Item seventeen, Agreement Between the City of Hawthorne and the Department of Transportation to Conduct a Fee Dump Day Event. Item eighteen, Agreement Between the City of Hawthorne and Southern California Edison for a Vault Replacement at City Hall. Item nineteen, Membership Dues Payment to South Bay Cities Council of Governments for Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023. Item twenty, Amendment Number One of Professional Services Agreement with LDM Associates, Inc. for the Administration of the CDBG and Home Programs to Include the Fiscal Year 2022 Community Project Funding Grant. Item twenty-one, Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 Blank Purchase Orders. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve items eleven through twenty-one?
To the chair.
You wanted to pull something, or no?
Yes, I'd like to pull item number nineteen, and I also wanna pull, uh, eighteen, so items eighteen and nineteen, please.
Sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen, I make a motion for, for all items with the exception of sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Second.
Was that correct? Everyone, okay. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Valentine, sixteen, please, Councilmember.
Yes, so this is the agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the Department of Transportation for Maintenance Services on State Right of Way Within Local Jurisdictional Limits, and I would congratulate Vaughn and the Public Works Department for getting this agreement, this is something we've all tried so hard to accomplish for so long, and that is to get the state to clean up the terrible, um, trash and debris on the freeway areas. So, um, I'd like to ask the city manager to, to tell us how he was able to accomplish this, and what we can expect, and where this is going to, to happen.
Absolutely, good evening, Council, Mayor. With the work of, help of Public Works, they were able to obtain this reimbursement fund through Caltrans. We designated nineteen sites, uh, the contract or agreement will last for twelve months. Within those nineteen sites, that will include trash removal, garfetti, uh, street control during the cleanup, and any other items needed, and also the dumping. So we're very happy to have this contract in place to clean up those rightaways near the freeways and on-ramps and off-ramps.
And when will this begin? When will this?
Immediately, staff is ready to start next week.
So I wanted to say that if this is successful, is there a way to renew this every year? Because I think this should be ongoing.
Absolutely, if the funding's available from Caltrans, we will be able to renew this, and I would like to have Public Works come back quarterly to give a report of what areas have been designated for cleanup and progress reports.
Yes, I'd like to thank you and thank the Public Works Department for doing this. This is wonderful news, and I, I wanna tell, let the residents know, because so many of them have complained to me over the years about how terrible the freeways look, so, and I, I was always forced to say, well, it's not our jurisdiction, we can't do anything about it, but fortunately, we were able to get the state to do something about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your gratitude.
Who to approve?
Okay, second, but, uh, let's go ahead and, well, just a quick question. So, will this address those on-ramps and off-ramps that I was discussing with you?
Yes, those are included in the nineteen sites.
There's like a lot of shrubbery that we just need just to clean, uh, 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 straight, just, just, there's just, that doesn't look like anything, it looks like the Garden of Gethsemane, man, ancient, like, shrubs, man. Do you know what I'm talking, you guys know what I'm talking about? When you get off on Hawthorne Boulevard and trying to turn left on Garden of Gethsemane, right?
So I think those proxy ports will be very important after the area is, uh, designated and, uh, improved, you can give input on if the improvement meets your, your standards.
And we could refine, okay, so yeah, we'll talk, yeah, we'll just move ahead. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Item seventeen, eighteen, English, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm gonna address this to the city manager, and then I'm sure you could, you could then provide information further to Public Works. I don't necessarily believe that we need to solely contract with Edison to replace a vault. I don't understand why the city didn't go a little further, possibly an RFP. It's costing us a hundred and fifty thousand, and it, uh, it's, it seems as if we don't have a choice, and I know they're gonna say that this is, you know, a specialty and only they could do it, I, I don't necessarily believe that. Just moving forward, if we could just, in the future, look for potential bidder, at least three, um, to provide such a, you know, an, a fix, if you will. So that's, that's that. I, 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 I don't necessarily support it, just for the simple fact that I think we could have done a little bit better in looking for other entities to replace a vault versus Edison.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, motion to approve?
For second.
Please vote accordingly.
The vote reflects mayor and councilmen voting yes, except for Councilmember Reyes English abstaining.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen, English?
Yes.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
So this again goes to the city manager, I don't necessarily understand why, um, the city is in a, if you will, let me see. Give me a moment. In membership with South Bay Cities, that's costing us thirty-one thousand dollars, and I have yet to find out exactly what South Bay Cities Council Governance does for us. In their letter, uh, it is basically saying that they're pleased to report another successful year working with our member cities and the county to help advance important programs, as well as assisting cities and program fund, funders in meeting goes, as well as continuing to respond to COVID-19 cases. And then they go on to say basically that, um, that they continue to provide our service to our members with no increased dues, like as if they're doing us a favor. They do indicate that, but due to the increased number of land use issues at South, South Bay Council of Governments, is being asked to review and oversee, there is a board approval special assessment for a regional planner, that's gonna cost us, for a regional planner, four thousand five hundred. So, again, I don't understand, um, as a member city, how we're benefiting. And so, um, that's, that's, that in a nutshell, other than they keep throwing us letters to support, uh, when there's items from Sacramento requesting us for letters of support or approval on policy legislation, incentive, uh, referendums, um, proposals, anything having to do legislatively. I, I need like to really understand what is costing the city us thirty-one thousand nine hundred and three dollar, dollars for a third party, I think we have our own regional planner, I think we have our own department planner. And I understand that they do grants and things like this, too. They do grants, they provide us grants, but I, I, I know it's not gonna take tonight to explain this to me, because I, I really need to understand this. So I'm not asking for anyone to do that right now, I just have concerns and questions with regards to the amount that the fee to be a member is so high, that's, that's where I'm at, and I, I am going to abstain from voting for this, so, thank you.
I would like to just address that, I think that, I think that there are so many programs that the COG provides us with, that we really can't explain it right here and now, so I think we should agendize it to have a discussion at the next, at the next council meeting of all of the programs that the COG provides us. And I am going to talk about the Client Aid Program tonight in Elected Officials Reports, which is another program of the COG. There are just so many, it is probably one of the most valuable organizations that we could belong to, that, that, that supports regionalism in the South Bay. So I really, I really think it deserves a program, a, an agenda, an agendized item by itself.
Noted, thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion to support this, the reason being that the League of, the South Bay COG is another at city municipal of cities advocacy group, just like the League of California Cities, just like SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, it's a third one that advocates for the city, and you sure they, they're making us, it's like our own lobbying group, it's an advocacy group, we don't have full-time people depending on that, we need to be, this is our, the way we partner with our local cities in being able to fight SB nine and fight SB ten, and they can make us aware of all the different things that are coming before us, so I feel that there's benefit, so I just made a second, I need a second.
I second.
Oh.
To the chair.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I do agree with you and Ms. Valentine, because, you know, I'm, I'm the alternate delegate for the South Bay COG, and they do provide a lot of service to this, to eighteen cities, we're eighteen cities consortium, and they do, for example, they provide money for homeless program that we have applied, and we receive some, they have the fiber network that we're gonna be benefit for the high-speed internet, they provide, you know, direction to some transportation issues, you know, through, through metro and what's going on in South Bay, so they do provide a lot, a lot of work, and, and like Mr. Mayor said, we don't have lobbies in Sacramento or in Washington DC that can, can lobby for us, but the South Bay COG, there's a lot of lobby out there, and it brings money, you know, sometimes that for us that is hard to get, you know, a lot from LASA, you know, from the, the homeless authority in LA County, and some transportation money, some fiber network money, so I, I do support this.
Um, real quick question, how many cities do you say are part of the?
It's, it's fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen, so that fifteen, fifteen times about thirty-one thousand is about five hundred thousand, that's, that's enough to just, to pay for staff, for, to pay for staff, and possibly even some like legal type of, you know, consulting that the, that they have, so it's reasonable in that, you know, there, you know, five hundred thousand sounds like a reasonable salary base for three or four people, plus a couple of, you know, consultations, so let's vote accordingly.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes, except for Councilmember Reyes English, who abstained.
Thank you. Further, Vaughn, can you please get us, get me a list, or the council a list of membership that we belong to, and what the cost is for those, like, such as SCAG, and the other memberships that we belong to, how much we're paying? And I know oftentimes they go off of population, so cities are oftentimes given a bill based off of population, so look into that, too, please, thank you.
Yes. Ms. City Attorney, your consent calendar, Mr. Clerk is going to read that for you.
Item twenty-two, Deny Claim for Damages Submitted by Cecilia Flores. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve item twenty-two?
That was quicker than Councilwoman English used to do.
Wow. I move second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Before we, before we move on to this one, we have a, an addressing, maybe, what a councilwoman, one of our councilmember colleagues was asking, I do, um... Uh, I do, um, you're gonna discuss this, but like, uh, is this something we need to vote on now because it's gonna happen next week type of deal? Or like how the, the, the league and South Bay COG, can't they give us like ample amount of time so we can prepare this stuff and not rush into certain, uh, most of these types of decisions? Councilwoman?
Well, I mean, when you say can't they give us enough time, um, so, so, um...
It's like we've, like, sometimes there's things that they suggest that we vote on that seems like right around the corner that we gotta vote on now because...
There, there is no real rush to do this, but I do, I do think we should, we should go ahead.
Okay.
Because the, the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, they're actually going to, um, they're actually working now to repeal it. And so our showing of support will help them now.
Go ahead.
It's true that it's not until, it's not until next year, but still, um, it's, uh, the, the work is going on now. So it's, it, our support would help them in their, in their, in their fight against the, uh, against Prop nineteen.
Can you describe it for us, or?
To the chair real quick.
Well, yeah, I, let her describe it and then I'll give you the floor.
I was just gonna mention, they were here, you remember?
Oh, it's, it's just a continuation on that one. Okay, then let's just go ahead, break the motion.
I move that we, um...
That was a different one.
I move that we, uh, support a statewide measure to repeal Proposition Nineteen.
Second.
Uh, please vote. Yeah, about the, uh, inheritances and everything, right?
Right, and...
Okay, yes.
Councilwoman Montero?
That doesn't seem fair.
The vote reflects mayor and councilmo, members of voting yes.
If you remember, um, it was gonna hurt families. And it was gonna be a taxation of, uh, those that have passed on and have left property for the family members and those that have to eventually have to pay taxes on something that's paid off already theirs. So this is ridiculous again, another tax on top of a tax.
They can't get their act together up there. I'm sorry. It's like if you wanna pass along, if one of the members of our, of our, uh, community here wants to pass on something down to their, to their child, to a child or some of their children, now that thing's gonna get reassessed at a way higher percentage for the property taxes. Just like, wait a minute, man.
The result is that their children probably wouldn't be able to take the property over and would probably have to wind up selling it.
Because they can't handle the property taxes.
Or it goes into probate and attorneys and courts and fees.
So it's just, you know, I don't know if Scott Weiner was behind this one too. Probably.
I'm gonna blame him cuz, you know.
He's up here talking a lot of this stuff.
I don't know, but we'll blame him.
Maybe not this one, but he was thinking about it. All right, next we have elected official, man, he's gonna show up like with like some thugs over here. You know, he's gonna meet me outside.
I'm for you.
He's coming for me, man. All right, all right. Next we have elected officials reports recommendations. Mr. City, uh, Treasurer? Sir?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, just, uh, I think next month, uh, I've been working on bringing forth the, the PARs trust thing, uh, should be happening in early and, uh, I just wanna really thank the, the finance team for assisting and really getting that done. Um, I think it's gonna be, you know, one of those long-term, uh, benefits, uh, not so exciting right now, but it's something if we start and it grows, it could really be helpful. Um, and then also, once that's done, I think one of the things I wanna look at too is like, uh, like some kind of slag accounts for, for treasuries or something like that. And, uh, you know, that's very early stages, but that's kinda what I've been working on. And, um, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, guys.
Excellent. Mr. City Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a few items. Uh, first of all, this is just a reminder that our city clerk's website, uh, with information regarding the November election, um, has been updated. So for information regarding the names of the individuals running for, for the upcoming collection and other uh, election-related information, please visit the city clerk's website, um, and click on the link labeled "Election Information and Voting." Um, at Saturday's World Fest Memorial Park, uh, at Memorial Park, uh, the city clerk's office will be hosting a booth for people who want to register to vote. Uh, so we look forward to seeing you out there. Also, this serves as a reminder that National Voter Registration Day is next Tuesday, September twentieth. So if you haven't, please register to vote. Um, I wanna thank all the volunteers who came out over the last month to package and provide produce, uh, to the community. I also wanna thank everyone who came out, um, to pick up the produce and also register to vote. Um, over the last month, we served over eight hundred families with fresh produce. And, um, based on, of how fast we've been running out of produce, um, before it would take us about, I would say two hours to get rid of, to be able to pass out produce to about four hundred families. Uh, now it's taking us about an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes. And yeah, so the need is out there for our community. So we'll be in front of City Hall on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, starting at eight AM, um, and it will be out there until supplies last. Um, I also wanna share that we recently hired a new deputy city clerk, uh, Juan Esquivel. Over here in front of our computer, uh, he's been doing a great job for us over the last few weeks. Um, we're just really happy to have Juan on our team. Um, welcome to City, the City of Hawthorne, Juan. Yes. And, uh, yeah, and then I just wanna, um, welcome back to school, everyone that, you know, started school. I started teaching my class last week. Um, so yeah, it's a lot of work on both ends for the educators and the students. So, uh, yeah, and for the parents. As a parent also of a kindergartner and a two-year-old, let me tell you, being a parent of a kindergartner takes a lot of work. So, um, yeah, so just welcome back to school to everybody, to the parents and the students. Um, and that's on my end. Uh, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Valentine?
Thank you, mayor. So, um, incidentally discussing the COG, we received a good report yesterday and at the steering committee from the COG. First, our homeless count in Hawthorne is down by fifteen percent, even though there were increases in Inglewood, Long Beach, and Wilmington, which resulted in an overall county increase. Second, the program instituted by the COG is the Client Aid Program. The program is reporting a success rate of seventy percent over the past thirteen months for disbursing thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to twenty-seven clients and permanently housing nineteen. One of those housed was a Hawthorne citizen. The COG's Client Aid Program has a higher success rate than LASA problem-solving. Client Aid attributes its success to being able to authorize and distribute funds the same day they are requested. Some of the immediate needs of clients for funds are for motel stays, rental and utility deposits, moving assistance, and auto repair. On the other hand, LASA takes a longer time, even weeks, to distribute funding. The COG is going to request three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional funding from the county for its Client Aid Program. So we were very pleased and think that Client Aid is one of the programs that's doing well where others have not done so, other programs from other organizations have not done so well in the past. And for the benefit of the public, if there is a homeless person or homeless encampment that you encounter, please contact the city's go-to person Dulce Medina at three one oh, three four nine, one six six three. Um, and she will, she is the coordinator for the City of Hawthorne, who will get in touch with all of these other programs that the City of Hawthorne is connected to for homelessness. And also I would like to, uh, acknowledge the closing of the time capsule today. It was a very moving ceremony and it was, it marked the end of our centennial celebration. And, um, we were all very, um, very moved to realize that we're closing the time capsule for another fifty years and, and our memories and our hopes go along with that closing and hoping that the city will prosper, prosper for the next fifty years, um, before the next opening of the time capsule. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, you know, thank you for coming. Uh, it was, uh, the chamber was full, so thank you all, the Neighborhood Association and the individual coming tonight and those who are listening at home. I was not going to address this package that I also received on the mail that some people have mentioned, but a lot of people have texted me and emailed me asking if I send this picture, this pack out, okay? So, I have to say that I did not send this package because I'm a man of integrity. I've been running for public office since two thousand and seven. I'm not just a four-year city council member. I've been school board member for almost, you know, three terms. And I understand the value of teaching good morals. I'm also a teacher, a council, so I preach good morals, so I would not be sending no package out. And for me, because I'm the only one for reelection in these tires, I'm going to campaign on my accomplishments and my success. If people want to vote for me again, I'll be happy. If they don't, I'll be happy also. So, I'm gonna put this to rest. So I did not send this package, but I receive a package too. So that's, that's it. Uh, uh, one more thing I have to say that, like I said, I've been running for office since two thousand and seven, from, from school district to this, to this chamber. I know where to put my signs. That because some people are taking my signs out of the corners and go put them in the city properties and cities, you know, middle aisle, and even in front of my preschool at the castle, at the Jim Thorpe Park, just to insult me or something, I don't know. But I'm a man of integrity and look, people started to graffiti the signs, my signs, stalling my banners already. But please respect because the, the banners, the signs is paid by the people of Hawthorne that give us money for our campaign. So don't cheat them. Okay? So please be honest and be, be, run your campaign the way, you know, if you feel that you have something to, to give to the city, just to talk about that. Don't, don't trash the city. So that's my, my pledge for you tonight about this election. I want to commend the staff for the, uh, torture truck that was outstanding this past weekend. Uh, we saw so many families came from different neighborhoods, you know, of Hawthorne enjoying the torture truck and the book fair. Seeing the kids, you know, playing with the police office cars and, and trucks and, uh, and book fair, you know, kids taking books to take home to read. So I was proud to see, to see that, uh, this Saturday. Again, I wanna thank the Hawthorne President's Council. I wanna thank Hawthorne President's Council for their, uh, to be able for us to provide, you know, uh, the fourteen thousand dollars to the K-nine unit to, for training and possibly to get another dog. And also, uh, coming up, October twenty, we're gonna do the community dinner to benefit the holiday assistance program, okay? On the twenty-seven August, the, uh, Lions Club International and the Hawthorne Lions provide free glasses. And it was like sixty-eight patients. So there, there, there was, um, screening, testing, and they gave them glasses to take home for free. So it was sixty-eight, uh, people received those glasses. And just one note, uh, Dr. Jimenez mentioned that Saturday, we're gonna have the Second Annual World Fest. And it's gonna be a lot of fun. So we have more than thirty-five vendors. We're gonna, we have five different bands representing from South America to Peru, to Mexico, to Africa. They're gonna play live music, so be there from ten AM to six PM. So enjoy yourself on Saturday. And again, I wanna say thank you to all the head departments because you guys have done an outstanding job. You know, from the streets, you know, I saw a lot of, um, more street improvement going on from the public works to the parks, although our park has been renovated. Uh, thanks to grants that the staff got from us. And I wanna say thank you to our police department because you see a testimony right here, okay, that we saving lives. We not taking lives, we saving lives. So, uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say good night.
All right. The councilwoman, English?
I just want to acknowledge again, congrats to the Hawthorne Parks Fellowship of Citizens.
Uh, I also would like to, um, commend New Star Justice for their new programs that they've implemented. Also would like to congratulate Senator Bradford on his efforts with regards to the men's summit that's coming up. Also want to, um, ask city manager to bring, uh, the item with regards to registration for bikes and see um, how we could, uh, work to, uh, help our residents with regards to registration of bikes and or not, and or, and or not, uh, provide a fee. I'd like some more, um, study on that. Uh, congrats to the hundred backpacks that were given away by the chamber and their upcoming golf tournament. Like to just acknowledge Pastor Jefferson with regards to his assistance of, uh, to families and fathers and mothers. I also would like to, um, say sorry to Amy. I was not aware of your accidents. Um, sorry to hear about that. I don't know what to make of, uh, you know, no vote confidence with the county. You know, um, I, I really try to stay out of other people's politics. And I think with the focus should be Hawthorne. And I think we've done a wonderful job with regards to, um, testing and, um, continued testing and providing vaccinations. Just want to also congratulate, uh, the K-nine, our Hawthorne Police, uh, again for being a recipient of, of our K-nine dinner, uh, of thousands of dollars throughout the years. And kudos to you, Councilmember Montero. Thank you for doing that and continue to champion that. Uh, again, the time capsule today is, uh, historic and, uh, everything that was provided in that speaks to the history of Hawthorne, but more importantly, where we're at today and how, uh, many of you in the community and those that work here in the city have contributed to, to that. And so that, that was great to see that and to be narrated by our mayor, that was even more special. I also would like to, um, city manager, if you could work with the Public Works Department with regards to, um, speeders along our streets, and this includes specifically the railroad. The streets that are right behind, uh, the Hawthorne Mall, that includes, um, from the Hawthorne Mall through Prairie, uh, I'm through, all the way through Prairie going, going east. So I'm talking about streets that come up to the railroad. And I've seen this time and time again where speeders are coming down the street, they hit the railroad and then they go airborne. So if we could get some speed bumps, humps, uh, I think humps are longer, bumps are smaller. However, we need to do it, we need speed bumps to stop these speeders. And more importantly, the street takeovers. So implement, um, public works, anything that has to do as a deterrent, and this includes along the Broadway area where the streets are broad and large and where there's abilities to do, um, a street takeover. They're very, uh, dangerous and residents are sick and tired of having their cars damaged, um, and the city's streets damaged. So anything we could do to, uh, make deterrence, um, and those include the round, I don't know what they're called, but they're buttons that lie on the street that are put in any, uh, large intersections to, um, help prevent those cars from spinning cuz ultimately if they hit one of those, they will definitely be spinning. Uh, if not crashing into something. I don't know if that, you know, again, it's gonna have to take some, some study. But those are some of the things. I'm getting ready to do, I don't even remember, fifteenth annual Operation Gobble, where I'll be assisting in helping families, uh, receive a turkey for those that are needing, um, help with the turkey this year. Look forward to partnering with our councilmembers who have been there in the past to, to do that. Uh, look forward to that. Let's see, what else? That should do it. Um, I do want to just on a personal, say thank you to our HPOA, our Hawthorne Police Department and all of those that assisted. Try not to get emotional. With my nephew's passing. Gavin was a young seventeen-year-old ROTC cadet, uh, who was in a motorcycle accident and was killed. He was only seventeen. We buried him last week and it was a beautiful service. But there was many of you that helped and contributed, um, in those efforts. And I just wanna say thank you on behalf of his father. He's a, um, military stationed in Idaho, where I'm from. And, um, he's a pilot on American Airlines and he's, um, serves in the Air National Guards and, and, and interesting enough is we hear all the stories about Gavin. Gavin was a pilot also and he was only seventeen. So, thank you to everyone that contributed.
Our condolences? Uh, Mayor Protem?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanna offer my condolences. Like, can't imagine how tough that is. Um, I, I want to continue by thanking the community for coming out and making your voices heard and participating in this process. Uh, always warms my heart when I, when I see the community out here, um, being involved and paying attention and, and, and speaking your mind. Regardless of, you know, what that position is. Uh, I think this is how we, you know, hold our elected officials accountable and how we make, you know, our city better is by being involved in the process wherever we can. I wanna thank, uh, our... I want to thank, uh, our city staff for all of your hard work. I know there's always things to do. There's never a shortage of stuff to do. So I just want to appreciate you for, for, for stepping up to the plate and, you know, making things happen. I also want to include the police department and thank you guys for your, your hard work and, and I appreciate the presentation. And, and I, I want to echo what the councilman said. I, I appreciate the fact that our police department is focused on, uh, saving lives, um, whenever possible. I know our officers are trained to provide emergency, you know, medical services. And I know we have officers that are trained to help with those with, uh, that are, have mental illness and, and work with those people. So I definitely appreciate that, that well-roundedness, uh, of our police department. Uh, I want to express my appreciation to all of our nonprofits in the community, neighborhood associations that are just doing great things for each other, for everybody in the community. Picking up, I guess, in areas where the city is kind of, you know, not addressing. And we definitely appreciate, uh, all of your contributions to, uh, to our fine city. And it, it helps to make our city a great city to be in. And so definitely appreciate that. I want to comment briefly about the upcoming election. Want to express how excited I am, the fact that I'm not on the ballot. It's my first election since 2013 that I'm not on the ballot.
That's true.
It really is, right? So, um, I, uh, am enjoying listening to all the complaints about lawn signs, right? Cause I remember being that same person complaining about lawn signs. I still mad at some people who ran, ran for judge in 2020, were putting their lawn signs right in front of my lawn signs. And it's just kind of part of the crazy game. And, uh, I'm sure it's gonna get worse. And I, I don't envy any, any of you guys, but I understand it's, you know, it's part of the experience. But definitely look forward to, uh, hearing everybody's positions and platforms as you choose to communicate, communicate with the, the public in whatever way you see fit. And I, I definitely hope that we have a record showing of voters, uh, this November. I think that's the best way for us to, I think there's nothing more important, or very few things more important than making your voice heard, uh, through your vote in, in our democracy and making sure that your, your, your voice, your positions are represented through your elected officials. So, uh, I mean, I'm excited about the upcoming election and I'm looking forward to, uh, working with whoever the people choose to vote, to vote in. October 8th, we have a community cleanup day. I'm gonna be meeting at 8:00 AM at Betty Ainsworth Center. Uh, there's gonna be a paper shredding and e-waste collection, uh, as well from 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM. We definitely are looking for as many volunteers to come out as possible to help out like we did in previous years and going throughout the community and kind of picking up some waste and some trash and, and working with, uh, public services and, and our staff and helping to beautify the city. Uh, and part of that, I always want to thank our, our graffiti cleanup team. I think I thank them every time, but I, I see their hard work, uh, put to work consistently. You know, right, me and Amy live not far from each other. There's a, a brick wall right on 147th and Yukon that's gets a lot of attention, right? From, from individuals that want to make their mark. And our, our graffiti team, um, is prompt in, in getting rid of that graffiti and I appreciate that. Few other things. Mr. City Manager, I, I remember when I was campaigning, I got barked at by dogs, probably in eight out of every 10 doors. Which let me know that we have a lot of dogs in the city. And, um, I think it, I think many of these dog owners would appreciate maybe a dog park in the city. And so if you can kind of look into what might be possible, uh, and bringing that to our fair city. We had a basketball clinic a couple weeks or month ago, uh, that was hosted by our police department. And I'd love to bring the, everybody who's involved in, in that to, uh, to council meeting in the near future that we can, uh, congratulate them. I want to revisit our short-term rental ordinance. If you can, uh, maybe have a, some type of a quarterly or confidential kind of updating us about that. Pastor Jefferson talked about some really cool things that he's doing in the community. Whatever way the city of Hawthorne can support those things, I would like to do so. And if the city attorney's office through the prosecution department and the diversion program can work with them, I would like to look into that as well. And lastly, I know we have performance evaluations for city manager and city attorney coming up soon. Whenever those might be, I want to make sure we have an outside attorney, uh, sitting in on those evaluations. And I would prefer it to be a firm other than Richard Watson and Gershon. I don't think that's everything I have, thanks.
May I have a go back?
Uh, we need to have your final go back, so you need to do the, go ahead.
Okay. I want to have a go back because I want to express my condolences to Councilmember Reyes English. I'm very sorry about the loss of your nephew. It's a terrible thing.
Can I? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, um, I want to express my condolences, I already talked to you. So, uh, yeah, that's 17-year-old, you know, gone too soon. So my deepest condolences. And, and Mr. Mayor, I want to give a directive because Ms. English reminded me, I almost forgot. Speed, speed humps, right? On Cordary Avenue. Because cars been speeding, you know, all the way from El Segundo all the way to 130, uh, to, uh, Rose Grant. You know, we have, you know, 132nd, 135th, 139th, and always to Rose Grant. They've been speeding up on that, uh, street. And I have a lot of people, you know, a long time ago saying that they need speed hump over there. So please, we can, uh, public work can do a little study and appreciate to come back to us. Maybe we can put speed hump on that Cordary Avenue, okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right, folks, now I guess it's my turn. Let's, uh, uh, so the touch truck event was a real successful event. And I think I mentioned that, um, I had, I saw, I had seen this like on the other side of LA County that they had an event. And I saw the flyer and wow, we should have that, that'd be so cool. I used to play with trucks and, and cars and fire trucks and all that, those big, the Tonka trucks with the dump truck. And, you know, I would have loved it if I would have been able to jump into one of the cabins, you know, honk the horn and, and play with all those different, uh, trucks, the, the real live versions. And so I came to our city, uh, manager and they said, you know what, Alex? I was thinking the same thing. I've seen those and I think that'd be a great idea. And then I talked to, uh, one of our commissioners that's on the, was on the Parks and Rec Commission, Dr. Denisea Sanford. She said, you know what, I'm planning one. So, uh, definitely, I, we started organizing, staff got together. Dr. Denisea Brown was part of the Parks and Rec, um, and other staff, including, uh, Kiwana and Brenda Gerardo and additional staff here within house. And they put together an awesome event. The, the thing that I really liked about this event is that not only, uh, not only residents from one particular side of the city of Hawthorne, but from all corners of Hawthorne came to the event. So I think those are the events we really need to, uh, have and promote throughout the city, to bring people from, uh, all corners for everybody to participate. There's no more west, I don't, I don't believe in that crap, west of the 405 or whatever. Don't turn east on, whatever. You know, that's, that's, that's getting older, right? You know, probably some of the houses over here are more expensive than ones over there. So we need to stop those types of things and these types of events and the future events that are being held, should be focused on bringing the city together. So, uh, this, oh, okay. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. City Manager, could you, if cable has like a small, um, report, maybe from the news, if they could just kind of show it at the next meeting, just so people out in the audience will be able to see it. People that usually attend our meetings and then, just to kind of, so you guys could see how nice and awesome it was. Councilman Montero?
I went up to, to the sky.
They took him up there. They took him up in the little, uh, the boom, right? And somebody said, Alex, why don't you shut off the power and keep him up there? And I said, no, I can't do that to my awesome council member colleague.
I was going to heaven.
No, but I commend you, man, because I'm afraid of heights, I wouldn't have been able to handle it. So that, there you, you got me there. You got me there. It was awesome. So hopefully you guys get to see that. I also started, started teaching too. My semester started at Al Camino, I teach a physics class. Thank you for my colleagues that, uh, helped me introduce me into that world, um, teaching and being a professor in college. And, uh, yeah, it's just a lot of people are, if you noticed, I don't know if you guys noticed, going, driving to work in the morning now, there's, the freeways are not like what they were a couple months ago. Now everybody's out there. So now they're requiring, probably requiring everybody to come into the office and no more hybrid this, no more Zoom this. Everybody's being required to be, um, out on the street. So plan early to, you know, maybe you gotta set your alarm clock 10 or 20 minutes before so that you can, uh, get to work on time because the freeways are crowded, okay? I've been, and I can't pay express lane rates, you know, fees all the time, so. It's not even an express. These last two days that I, the last two times I got on the express, they're backed up just like the rest of the freeway. You guys, you guys see what, you know, some of you guys have experienced that, right? The Narcan, um, I work in a jail in the daytime, uh, with, uh, adult inmates. I teach, uh, math and science to the adult male inmates at the Men Central Jail. And one thing that like really stood out is that we have Narcan adjacent to our classrooms. We have them available so that if we had to, we would use them. And, uh, most likely it's the CAs, the custodial assist, custody assistants and the deputies. But if we were to use them, we, we'd have it available as teachers. And that's an epidemic of, of epic proportions, man. People getting hurt all over the place. Guys coming in and, I mean, I don't even want to speak, stuff gets sneaked in, you know, things that people come in, you know, just because they got the Narcan, uh, injected into the, uh, dispensed into their nose and they came alive, like you saw them prop up. The effects on your body from that opioid being circulating through your body, it's, it's punishing your body. It's deteriorating your body. So, uh, be very careful, guys, you know, it's just, um, at some point, the pharmaceutical companies let this thing get out of proportion. They just let it happen. You know, and then the synthetic opioids were developed by all the, the narco, the narco, the drug cartels and everything.
And it's being trafficked over the border as well.
Yeah, yeah. But we also try to have to, on our end, we have to try to take care of our culture too, of rejecting drugs too, right? So, um, look, guys, so with regards to the political things that's going on, the campaigns, look, I'm very disappointed as well. I experienced something that I've never thought I would experience the last election and it's coming back. And I, like I said, it's the same playbooks that people tried to use back then. Except that people are, as I've said, people are throwing rocks and hiding the hands that threw it. And I think you see a lot of people trying to distance themselves from responsibility for this. What need is there to distance yourself from something that you're not responsible for? I think you hear statements here about people claiming it. Champion of integrity, I'm the man of integrity. Every single damn meeting, you hear the same thing, same thing, same thing. I think there's a saying that if you say it enough, they will believe it. But what's the need to say that? Are you trying to convince the public, convince yourself, or convince both? I think, uh, it's evident, it's evident who's responsible for this. You guys come up to your conclusion, if the shoe don't fit, don't wear it. But I think, uh, we're destined to have a campaign that's gonna be fraught with, uh, a lot of things. There's, there's a lot of things thrown about every single candidate. I disagree with some candidates, people who were candidates, who were, uh, friends of mine that are running and they're like, I'm not supporting and et cetera. You know, let them make their case for why they should be elected. But when you start throwing these rocks and trying to start, try throwing all these little high school campaign tactics, it just says more about the people. Who stands more to lose by throwing out all those little mysterious packets with no names? Just add it all up. The mathematics just tells you who's responsible for this. Or who's knows who's responsible for this on their behalf. With, with that said, I really hope that people will refrain and just focus on promoting themselves, their ideas, what they will do or what they have done and a combination of both. That's the way, because I just, you guys, it took me two or three months to recuperate from the last election. It was awful, man. You know, every damn day I got, you know, hit with stuff. And we still came on top because we focused on the truth, right? So I think maybe some people should focus on what, how it happened for me. But enough said, um, I'm pretty sure whoever wins, uh, I'll be glad to work with them for the next two years whatever time, uh, I'm on the council, right? We'll, we'll find a way. Go ahead, Ms.
Real quick, thank you, Mayor. I just want to welcome and, and, um, say, um, welcome to the city of Hawthorne, Juan, our new city attorney, or excuse me, city clerk, uh, Escovado, right? Okay, just wanted to say congratulations and welcome.
Okay, guys, uh, there's a, there's a close session, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. I won't be staying for the close session, so, uh, you know, have fun back there and make a good decisions, et cetera. So, uh, go ahead. Do we read this first? Mr. City Attorney, please read the item into the record.
I can read it if you like.
Oh, yeah, okay, you're reading on behalf? I didn't, I thought it would be directly, go ahead.
Transcript of the city attorney reading it.
Item 24, conference with legal counsel, real property negotiation pursuant to section 549, 56.8 of the California Government Code, property APN 4041 dash 015, dash 016. Property address 12547 Hawthorne Boulevard. City negotiator Von Trade Norris. City manager, negotiation with Bank of America. Under negotiation price terms, uh, re, uh, lease. Okay, is there any comments on this? If there's no further comments, uh, I'll declare the comment section of this, uh, set, item closed order. We will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a close session of our conference pursuant to the agenda at 8:12.
Can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands. Scrub them while you sing this song. Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash. Rub your hands and fingers in the places in between. Using soap and water makes your hands so clean. Wash your hands. Reach out your elbows out. Five, four, three, two, one. Now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endanger human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government
At 9:13 PM, we have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda.
to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills
Listed as Item 25, City Attorney, please read out.
and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure.
In response to the three closed session items, numbers 24, 25, and 26,
At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year.
the council was provided with a report, guidance was given, and there was no reportable action taken.
Great, so we're all good as far as closed sessions, don't need to do anything else?
Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas.
Great, 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 great.
1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020,
Is there anything further from council members or staff? If not, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:14 PM.
a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling and enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing, but all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1st, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed and talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.